I'd like to call the supervisory meeting number three into session. At this time, I'd like to ask the other three chairs, beginning with Northborough, Southborough, and the region to call their committees into session. Northborough?
I would call it into session to Northborough.
Okay. Southborough?
Minus one attending. She's on her way.
I would like, Kwanley from Southborough, I would like to call the Southborough School Committee into session at five thirty-four. And I would call region into session.
Okay, before we begin our agenda, just a matter of how we're going to proceed tonight. This meeting is posted from now until six forty-five. And just so that we're aware, the Northborough School Committee has their meeting posted at seven o'clock tonight to begin right afterwards. So I'm going to be, try to be aware of the time so that the Northborough Chair Kelly Gannett can begin her meeting on time at seven o'clock. The first item that we have is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have any comment at this time before the committees? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next one. The next agenda item is number two, Superintendent's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four evaluation, mid-cycle review. I'll hand it over to Superintendent Martineau.
Sure, thank you, and good evening. I want to provide the committees with a mid-cycle goals update for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In the pursuit of developing a deeper understanding of the educational work that's happening in our ten schools, I would say that the completion of four school residencies at Algonquin Regional High School, Lincoln Street School, Proctor Elementary, and Trotter Middle School stands out as a significant highlight. It's been great being in our schools, spending entire days learning about the work, interacting with students, and really hearing about successes and the challenges. Spending a total of twelve full days in schools is equivalent to nineteen percent of the days in session, which I think is a significant accomplishment. In the past, I've spent time visiting schools, but it was more in two-hour increments and didn't always allow for conversations with a larger variety of educators or for me to really see what was truly happening around our buildings. So these residencies will continue in the months of January, February, and March, and the goal is to have all ten schools experience or have me and the leadership team experience of residencies in all ten schools. It's also allowed me to see some of the goals in action. So curriculum implementation goals around thinking about second-step program, observing second-step lessons, seeing impact those lessons are having, the work around wit and wisdom around E L A curriculum, really getting a sense of, you know, what teachers are challenged by, where their successes are, and seeing lessons that are happening with our students. And also Carnegie Math, really seeing the work that's happening at the middle school level around Carnegie Math, observing lessons, looking at data, having conversations with teachers, really gives me and the team a better sense of where we are in terms of goals around some of the curriculum initiatives that we have. I would also say that a success so far has been the introduction of signs of suicide at high school level. Last year, we implemented signs of suicide at the middle school, both at Trotter and Mellican, and this year, the goal was to implement the program at high school, and that has been a success so far in terms of launching that program. And I think just in general, you know, other successes that I think in progress forward are some of the larger-scale projects that we move forward with, the Proctor roof, the Algonquin Athletic Complex project, and some of those other capital projects that have been really important but also take a significant amount of time and energy in terms of making sure that they're done well, they're on time and on budget. And I'll just say that I did outline where we are in terms of progress toward the goals that I set this year. And just also, as always, want to acknowledge that they're not necessarily my goals, just my goals, that from educators implementing teaching and learning in the classroom, to principals leading their buildings, to directors leading their work, this truly is a distributed leadership model, a collaborative effort so that we do make progress in terms of our strategic objectives. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that the committee may have.
Any questions or comments? As you know, the next step will be in March, Greg will give us another update at the combined meeting on his goals, and then Kathleen and I will be reaching out to you between March and May of writing your individual evaluations, and then we'll be working together on a composite and send it to you before we present it to Greg at the June meeting, I believe.
It's our favorite time of year.
But I'd also, okay, one second, but I'd like to thank every member, I know last year, for the two chairs who worked on it. It was wonderful, they did such a wonderful job on the composite, and every member participated in it. I know that it's really hard to do it, it's almost like we're writing a teacher evaluation, but it's now in the superintendent, and everyone has always done such a great job in your comments and being so reflective. I know I look at mine and think like, oh my gosh, and I meet somebody else's, and they saw something different, so I really appreciate it. Question? Comment?
It's more of a request, I suppose. Because you mentioned it as part of your residency, I would be very keen to hear, because I'm probably not going to have the opportunity at the regional level, about the progress and acceptance and sort of future of the Carnegie Math, please. So I'd really be interested in hearing where that is at. Having had two children participate in it, I have my own of ops services, so I'll let you know about it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, going on to the next item on our agenda is the solar update. Superintendent Martineau?
Sure, so the solar feasibility study group has continued its work. As you all know, we've had a successful solar project here at Algonquin Regional High School. We have a solar array on the roof at Algonquin that is serving the community well and serving the budget well because it's actually, it's cost, it's generating revenue for us. So we re-engage with Select Energy to think about what are the next phases of implementing solar across our three districts. So Assistant Superintendent Lavoy and I and Select had a conversation around what could be, and this evening, we want to present a total of seven projects that we'd like to move forward with. Tonight's meeting is not about voting, but more informational, and then at each specific committee, we'll move these forward, and each town will have a different process because the regional committee is its own entity, the process is different than pre-K through eight Northborough and pre-K through eight Southborough, so there will be some nuances moving forward. So I'll turn it over to Keith, who will introduce Select Energy.
Excellent. Well, really thank the committees for the opportunity this evening. I know we've had a variety of different conversations, and much of this information is not going to be new to all of you, but for some, it will. I do want to introduce Dave Visson. He has been our representative from Select Energy that has worked on putting together the seven proposed projects for the district. And like Greg said, tonight is to give you exposure to that. In the packet is Dave's presentation. I am having a tough time getting it up on the screen, so if you do have it on your packets, you will see the updated version. So Dave, I know you've memorized it. Do you need it?
I might just grab my laptop.
Okay. And I will do my best to get this up and running. So really, the goal of tonight is to share a little bit more about the seven projects that are proposed. There are projects in each of the three districts due to restrictions of the different buildings. A few of those projects are roof replacement dependent, and we are trying to secure some grant funding to get that done as the primary objective before solar is considered. So Dave is going to kind of outline that, make sure that that's highlighted as we go to share the different projects, and Greg was far more successful than I was, so.
Just don't look at my desktop.
I'm not looking at your desktop. Everyone look away from that screen. Are you going to pull up the packet? Yeah, he's going to pull up the packet. That was the same presentation, right, that you shared last week?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good. All right, he'll get to that momentarily.
Greg, if it makes you feel better, all of my progress charts look the same.
I can start on the parts that are a little less, I guess.
I know you because I was at the solar committee, but I don't know if everybody else does. I don't know if you want to start.
Sure, yeah, I'll get started, yeah. Thank you for the introduction and the time to talk. Dave Visson from Select Energy. We're based in Hamilton and got started in two thousand nine. I haven't been with the company that long, but we've done, as we mentioned, a project with Algonquin Regional before, a few years ago, with this school, and we've done analysis with staff and members of the solar feasibility committee to look at seven additional opportunities. So I want to get into the specifics of those, which is, you know, real world leader in non-residential solar in the Northeast, so we work with many school districts, municipalities, as well as businesses, typically do solar on buildings. We sometimes do solar canopies, which you'll see a couple of examples of in this.
Dave, we were just going to say for you'd be more comfortable, and so the audience could see you, if you want to go to the podium or?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I was going to say, do you want him over here or where do people, I was like, I can move stuff.
I think does the graphics.
Cameras rolling.
Now that it's on the screen, I don't know.
Okay.
Hands hang around. Yeah.
So I think we're just wrapping up about Select, right? Yeah, just in terms of, you know, what we do, we're full service solar providers that entails everything from kind of design and, you know, engineering of a project, actually procuring materials, installing it, and financing it, which is the old thought about how these are financed in minutes and then minutes. So we do, we have a team at Hamilton with twenty-five or thirty electricians and technicians that are kind of out every day making sure these systems perform off to expectations. You know, so we'll talk about power options in a little bit, that's the last bullet point. I think we can go to the next slide. So all seven projects that we propose, we finance with something called a power purchase agreement, or P P A for short. And so, you know, the hallmarks of this are, you know, starting up our left corner, no upfront costs, so all the capital expenses of building the project, designing, permitting it, are all paid by Select Energy or company, not by the districts. So, you know, in return, basically what the district is doing is allowing us to install the project, either on rooftop or parking lot, so there's a lease agreement, but there's no, you know, money exchanged through the lease, it's just to allow us to have property on, property that is actually owned by the town or the district. So under P P A, it's a fixed cost per kilowatt hour of solar energy generated and sold to the building, to the energy, the school district buying it. So the terms are anywhere from twenty to twenty-five years, and as long as we say fixed, it's like, if it starts at fifteen cents per kilowatt hour, it stays at fifteen cents per kilowatt hour for that entire twenty or twenty-five year term. So it is a very strong hedge against the inflation that we generally see in grid electricity prices. The kind of handshake icon about power options, so Power Options is an independent nonprofit organization, they are an energy buying consortium, and they, I think all of the districts are members, they buy many energy commodities on behalf of their members, sort of as a consortium of tools to buy. So they might buy, you know, electric supply, they might buy gas supply, they also buy solar storage. So Select Energy, our company, has been selected by Power Options through a competitive R F P process that the state has, you know, authorized as being adequate for procuring solar. They've selected us now three times in a row as the solar storage provider for municipal and state entities as well as nonprofits in several sectors. So they're sort of acting as an advisor, an advocate, a facilitator throughout the process in addition to, you know, the work that we do directly with customers. So again, we talked about, we finance, operate, maintain, install systems, pre-negotiate favorable contracts, those are done through Power Options and the customers with our input, that they're sort of their party involved there. And then, you know, public entities have people that procure directly through us because Power Options has conducted competitive procurement under state statutes citation. So I think we could head to the next slide. So this is the summary slide, just all numbers, but I'll try to just be pretty fun with it and we can kind of dig in by district in terms of where the projects come in. So seven projects, the first Trotter Middle School is the project in Southborough, then we have four in the Northborough district, and then two that we propose for the Algonquin, one a canopy, one a second roof project, although we already have one, there's more room on the roof that isn't covered in solar panels right now. So all told, we're expecting this to generate over, again, a term of generally twenty years, in some cases, twenty-five years for the canopies, about five point six million dollars in savings. So we'll look at how those savings get generated very particularly on the next slide, but system size totals about two point three eight megawatts of B C capacity, and we think this is going to cover collectively across all seven of these buildings, these systems will produce about eighty-six percent of what the building's currently consuming electricity. So very close to one hundred percent offset. And go to the next one.
Can you comment on the middle column there about the roof replacement?
Sure, so, yeah, each one of these will be tagged on the future slides too, but Trotter and Z schools, as well as part of the Algonquin school that we will be putting a new system on, would need some type of, you know, roof replacement or mediation, probably a full replacement, at least in the first two instances. So we, you know, we have talked about different sources of funding potentially to accelerate that, you know, obviously it will get replaced eventually, but the legislature in Massachusetts' budget actually included something new in fiscal twenty-four called Green School Works, so we have some hopes that there could be some funding there. It's generally to enable clean energy projects to be installed on public school buildings, and generally, you know, old roofs are a major obstacle to doing that, so we think there could be a lot of funding available for roof replacement on some of these, but, you know, other sources will definitely be looked at to try to speed things up.
On the current usage, don't you expect that with technology, et cetera, that usage is unlikely to remain at the current level? And so it's unlikely that eighty-six percent will in fact make the entire twenty-year duration of the P P A?
Yeah, I would say that's probably a fair statement, in the next, you know, twenty years, you're going to increasingly electrify things that are not electric now, right? Mainly heating and E V charging perhaps for staff, for students. So I think those are the big categories, and we haven't modeled, you know, load growth, but I do agree there would probably be load growth as we, you know, wrap in there electrifying things. But, you know, this is a good starting point, we did use sort of the available, you know, space on buildings, there are probably new buildings within that term as well, you know, so we can continually try to add solar where we can, I think is the strategy.
I'll just make one comment too, that if we look at the past ten years, for example, you know, through the green community projects, we've changed all of our lighting in our schools, so it's energy efficient, so it actually has been a reduction of electricity costs. So we're hoping that in addition to solar, there are other technologies that actually make it more efficient. And I think, you know, looking at geothermal for heating, there are a lot of different opportunities that I think will present themselves in the next five to ten, fifteen, twenty years that we're not even thinking about. And I'll just, one last comment is that, you know, when we installed the solar array, electricity was relatively inexpensive, we had a good power purchasing agreement, we had a rate locked in, and then that contract ended, and then the rates skyrocketed. So what was fixed was the amount we were paying on the roof for electricity. What was volatile was the amount we were buying through power options. So it's just one example, we actually made, we actually saved more money than we anticipated as a result of the volatile energy market that existed.
Yeah, that's a great point. Our model's assuming a two and a half percent annual increase in grid energy prices, but I think in some cases, there are jolts of, you know, upwards of fifty percent, depending on, you know, what year you're talking about, which is, you know, again, the hedge is, it's a zero percent increase on the P P A rate for twenty, twenty-five years. Yeah, so this is, it's probably easier to look at your screen at this side, but the Trotter school design is shown, again, needs a new roof first, so that's hopefully coming soon. This is just the detailed cash flow for power purchase agreement, so you can see kind of the mechanics, and it'll look the same for other projects, just with different, you know, amounts. But essentially, just to take you through with the twenty-year cash flow here, you might actually consider doing a twenty-five year if we have a new roof on the building, probably, you know, the roof will last at least twenty-five years, but we can kind of cross that bridge. The solar production, you know, in kilowatt hours is the first thing, you see four hundred and six thousand eight hundred in the first year, it does decline on a predictable, we say, you know, point five five percent annual reduction is typical, and so that's built in over time. Right now, you're paying about twenty point two nine cents per kilowatt hour of grid delivered electricity. So by, you know, getting this many kilowatt hours, you're avoiding paying that price right to the utility, so it's about an eighty thousand dollar savings of utility expense. Then you're paying about ten point three cents per kilowatt hour for the power purchase agreement that solar energy may produce, so you're paying Select now about forty-two thousand dollars in that year. So the difference is just, you know, the eighty thousand you avoided minus the forty-two that you paid us is approximately thirty-eight thousand in savings, so it's just the simple math of the cash flow, and then we do it, you know, every year. Again, this is, you'll see the, this rate stays the same time one three, but this rate is us coming in two and a half percent a year, because we're quite sure that the grid price will go up, we just don't know exactly how fast, but that seems to be a pretty conservative estimate based on the past. But this is how we just totaled it up, about a million and change over twenty years, so any questions?
Why does the solar production go down?
It's part of the technology of solar panels has always been a decrease annually as the materials, they don't, they don't wear out to the point of not producing, but they just produce less over time. So the, you know, that's something that we, we would enforce that with the manufacturer because we own the system, and so if it's dropping off faster than the predicted percentage decrease, then we could, you know, file a warranty claim and get a new panel. But that's, you know, we might do better than that, but that's what we think will happen.
Does that degradation only, is that only seen in the aggregate, or is that seen in the individual units in a deck, so to speak? Like, I don't know how else to frame that, right? So are you, are you just, are you saying that like, the warranty gets triggered because as a system it drops faster, or because individual units within the system aren't performing?
Yeah, I think it would typically, we would look at it at a system level just to see is, you know, is everything kind of aligned with our expectations? Because, you know, our team is monitoring these things every day, every year, to make sure that it's not dropping off faster than we had expected it to.
It is.
So I think, I think it would be at a panel level though, if we were to find, you know, they would necessarily replace the tire, right? But again, all that is, we're doing operations and maintenance, so we can identify any issues, you know, that are coming up.
Sure.
So and you're taking our electricity expenses and essentially putting them over a twelve-month period, right? Is that, is that, or are you assigning this to the bulk of the electricity usage between the end of August and mid-June? So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, right? Like, are you saying, because the energy generated in the summertime, when there is a third of the usage or less, that's a guess, then are we then in excess of our usage, and is there a storage in return?
That's a great question. So it depends on the building, some of these buildings do have significant usage in the summer, others have less, but we model it on a monthly basis because that's what the utility does, they check on every billing month, did you, if you produced more solar energy than the building actually used that month, it's an overage, and they credit that at a certain, you know, formulate rate, and they roll it over as dollars onto the next bill. So we modeled that, I think a lot of these, these don't, they don't have overproduction because their size to be a little bit smaller than the current usage, but in the summertime, you're right, that's when you get the highest solar production. If it is rolling over, we've already factored that in, so, you know, they, basically, the savings, if you're generating a lot over and the credits are carrying over to the next month, you're going to use them all up during the year, but we factored in, like, if those , the credits are not fully valued as retail, you know, price energy, that's already baked into the financials, so it's, we're showing a full year, but we model it monthly.
Okay, okay. And so it's not, it's not, it's not an issue of storage, it's rolling over of credits associated with what's put into the grid?
Exactly, it's all on an accounting basis, the meters.
Plus or minus measurement every month?
Yeah, it's all like net metering.
So is these systems designed to provide direct power to the school, or is it just a financial offset?
It's direct power, so it is behind, these are behind the meter systems, which means that if it's producing energy and you have load in the building, which will always upset some electricity, you know, electrical load, it's going to first go to the direct load in the building, and if you're not using it all at that instant, it flows back into the grid, and the neighbors will probably use it, but it's, it's really on an accounting basis, they only look at the month, so.
So but if the grid is down, then this building will be up?
If the grid goes down, the system can't produce because it has to be turned off so that, you know, line to line folks can, the utility people can work on the lines, so.
This doesn't serve as backup power?
It doesn't, no. Yeah, it's out of backup, you've got that battery storage that can island, so basically the battery becomes sort of an island away from the grid, and these don't include that, it's something that we do look at, but the cost is very high to have the service backup, and it's even high to have the service of revenue generating, so we thought the best scenario here is just solar by itself, and that may change in the future, we can add batteries, and right now, it's best to go solar only.
Those don't get, like, on a generator, they're not on a generator, like, if a building has a generator, those wouldn't be on the generator.
Yeah, if you have generators, which you probably do in most of the schools, they still would work as they could have, so if the grid goes down, the solar stops producing the generator, it can still generate electricity.
So the electricity, the grid electricity rate has two parts, right? It has the electricity purchase rate and the delivery rate, and the P P A rate is just one flat rate, ten cents and nothing else?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, so, yeah, you pay, you know, you can procure the supply portion, I think, through power options, and that's usually locked for three years rate, that's just supply, tends to be in the neighborhood of, you know, thirteen, fourteen cents per kilowatt hour right now. Then you have one national grid charges to deliver it, they call it distribution transmission charges. So solar avoids all of those, you know, so that's why we're comparing it to twenty cent kind of all-in grid rate, and we're offering this, you know, for the Trotter around ten point thirty cents, but there's no, like, yeah, it's all-in rate for the solar P P A prices, no other charges. And it's only, you only pay for what the system produces, so within a month, you pay kilowatt hour rate times how many kilowatt hours it produces that month.
So it's still connecting the grid, right? Like, when it, when it's overflowed, it flows back to the grid, and so what does the school pay the grid for being, you know, part of that, for using that?
So this, so we pay, Select Energy, when we developed this project, we're definitely paying some fees to National Grid to apply for interconnection, so a lot of those have already been paid, and we've actually got, we had interconnection approval on all five systems except for the two Algonquin, all five and the two Algonquin that are kind of working right through the process, so we're actually quite close to, you know, build these, but you're not going to, the school will not pay additional fees to the utility for adding solar. Okay, I know we're, these are great questions, I think I'll try to be brief on the, so the Northborough portfolio, these are the Northborough schools, these will all be to have basically town meeting approval in the spring to allow the, to allow the official that is given that authority to sign a lease for these because it will be on a timely property, so I just want to highlight that piece and the same for Southborough for the one we just took that. So, yeah, the total here is about two point three million in savings over the term, we do have the Z school on the left meeting the new roof, but we know Proctor's got a new roof, and Lincoln has these standing seam metal roofs that are, that are very long, long-lasting and have plenty of life left.
Lincoln, at Lincoln.
I was, I said, I said.
I think.
You said Lincoln.
You did say Lincoln.
Sorry, yeah, but, and then Mellican, the canopy, we'll see a picture at the very end of what that might look like from the ground, but that's basically just taking the strip of parking that's not quite right next to the school, but just, you know, one, one overs the east of it, kind of in the middle of the parking lot, because of, you know, Mellican is, I think, maybe has some future redevelopment kind of plans in the building, far enough in the future, but part of the lot is going to be the same, so. So, yeah, ninety-two percent offset across, you know, the four buildings right now. You can see on the, the Z, the Z School is, is a little bit oversized, it produces about a hundred and twenty-five percent of what the building currently consumes. And that gets back to, you know, the point about net metering is you're going to generate credits there in the summer, but they will be consumed on bills throughout the year in the winter mostly. So we factored that in, but I think that's all I wanted to cover on, on this slide.
Kelly. Um, so, so the warrant article is not for money, it's for permission?
Correct.
Yes.
Is it zero cost?
It's to enter into a lease agreement. So that is through the town that is required, you know, a town meeting vote to enter into that agreement.
But no dollar amount associated with it, so that's okay.
Yeah.
But, sorry, does that, sorry.
Still has.
Okay.
There's still a transactional expense here. So of the two, three, two, zero, four, eight, seven, which is the lifetime savings, what is the, the lease cost?
There is none. So it's, it's a, it's a, a lease in, in legal terms because the town is basically leasing the roof to select energy where, so we can have.
There's a generator, there's a.
Yeah, so it would be like we're leasing land, the land is the roof where the solar panels sit.
Air rights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the air rights of the mess, like.
There's no dollar amounts in the lease where, you know, I think the, the, the consideration is that you're getting, you know, a, you know, a PPA that, that saves the school money, I think would be the, the legal underpinning of that. But we're not going to pay separately to be on the roof, basically.
I think too, the contracts speak about, you know, certain scenarios, what if a panel, the panels had to be removed? So there's oftentimes that there's a one-time removal, there's safeguards built into these contracts that assume some type of emergency situation where they, where select would be involved.
Maybe this would just help, maybe some, some of us here. Maybe you could just explain, so how are you making money?
That was, that was my follow-up.
I think that's where people were kind of dancing around.
Yeah.
So let's be clear, how are you making money?
Yeah, so there's three, there's three revenue streams. So, well, first is the tax. So the federal government is offering thirty percent of the tax for the system, so we do monetize. The other main one is we're selling the energy to you. So the power purchase agreement, we invoice you every month for how much energy we generated.
So you got a margin there?
Without.
Yeah, you have a margin there.
Well, we, we're getting, we're getting paid for the kilowatt hours generated. Then the third, the third is that the state of Massachusetts has a, has a program called the SMART incentive. So the incentives go to the owner of the system, where the owner of the system, we're getting a SMART incentive. So I will highlight, yeah.
So if we own the system as a district, we'd be saving eighty thousand dollars a month, I'll use Row One. We'd be saving eighty thousand dollars a month. Select is, is making forty-one thousand of, of that savings, and we're saving the other half of it. So it's making every, every month it's.
Plus, plus the credit, plus the Massachusetts credit.
Correct.
Whatever that makes, yeah.
Isn't it true that some of those credits are not available to these panelies or nonprofits?
So two years ago, that wasn't true. You know, current, currently, under the inflation threshold, they are as direct pay. So it's, things have changed. We still find, I've had multiple, you know, districts and municipalities ask to see, you know, cash flows of that, whether they owned it. And generally, they feel like the, when you do a net present value calculation, that our PP is actually more beneficial than, than owning it. And on top of the issues of you have to come up with the capital to buy the system, which, you know, something like this.
Manage it, yeah.
So. So I think one, one thing in terms of pricing is, is power options relationship is very important to kind of point out here. When we, when we won the competitive RFP through power options, we agreed to certain pricing and agreed to certain rate of return caps. So we have, we are not allowed to, you know, make more than a certain rate of return on projects depending on their size and some other characteristics and site-specific stuff. But there's, you know, there's a very strict formula that we have to follow and that power options has the ability to basically review every project thing they do to make sure they're compliant. So because it wasn't competitive procurement done, so it's under state statute, so that's, that's where the pricing comes from.
Kathy?
So why are we not doing any of the schools in South Borough because of what they?
Yeah, so we used the solar feasibility study that we did about eight, eight or nine years ago and evaluated each of our buildings for solar. And that feasibility study was used really to think about what schools are, were viable for solar and the ones that you see were. I would say, share that NEARI is not on here because, again, the NEARI building committee, we're looking at a potential building project, and we left that, that off. Yeah, Woodward, I think the feasibility of Woodward was.
Very low.
Yeah. I think, I think part of South Borough's challenge right now is having a building committee studying various scenarios. We, that's also a factor. The choices.
So do you, if we were to do this, does, does that make select energy our electricity provider? So all the electricity bills we pay to select energy and then you're settling with the grid or?
No, so you, so you just pay us the, how many kilowatt hours do we generate this month times the agreed-upon rate? You still have National Grid as your electricity supplier, and they're, they're still bringing grid energy, you know, when you need it in the building. So you still get a bill from them, it's just going to be reduced, you know, if you, if you used to use, you know, a hundred thousand.
Oh, so in the example of the one twenty-five, we would expect from, from National Grid that they would be sending us money?
So they, they wouldn't be sending you a check, they would be, in the summer, probably rolling over credits onto the next month's bill.
But what if, but if it's one twenty-five?
Yeah.
And if it's always one twenty-five? You don't get to, how do we get to monetize?
One twenty-five in the summer.
And you're gift carded.
So. It's mostly, it's mostly over the course of the year, there are other charges on the bill that we don't directly offset, and they're called, you don't have them in your house, so most people aren't familiar with them, but they're called demand charges. And so larger buildings like commercial service, when they're using a lot of power at once, the National Grid finds the time during the month, the fifteen-minute interval where you had the most demand for power. So it would typically be like when you have people in the building and you're running a lot of equipment or, you know, especially air conditioning in the summer. They're going to, there is a kilowatt, it's a rate of consumption, and they multiply that by a certain rate. We don't assume that we're going to decrease that because solar may be, you know, there may be cloud cover when you hit that point, or that point may happen when it's dark out. So we're just assuming that we're reducing kilowatt-hour base charges, which are, you know, the majority of your bill usually, but there's still a lot of charges left on the bill from demand. So we've done, we've done the math, there's, even though it's producing a hundred and twenty-five percent annual kilowatt hour consumption, you're still going to have plenty of money that you would, that you would be paying the National Grid a lot, but enough to absorb those, those credits on the bill in the, in the maritime realm. So, so basically, you're not going to have, like, money sitting on the bill that you can't use to get it considered.
Sean?
Do we get billed, or do we pay by building or by district?
By building.
Because.
Each building?
Because that.
By building, yeah.
Because that situation, if we were to compile it and so on, I don't, I don't know if there is a way to put us together as an entity and. And then it would.
Use the overage within our district.
Right.
Becky?
Each building has their own account.
Yeah.
And is there a way to make it all?
Becky, do you have one of the responses?
I mean, I, I don't know that you would have an answer now, I, I don't know if that's possible, but.
What do you think?
So Becky, right now we're like.
North Borough as a district would pay one electric bill. So that, that way, if one is producing higher than the other, it all evens out.
So right now, each, each school's meter separately?
Because of the meter part, okay.
Yeah, and each solar system is connected to one and only one meter.
Yeah.
That's specifically us.
Okay.
We have to apply to interconnect behind the system.
You have to feel three different houses, you can't just.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's some accounting I've read, you know, all of these, you'll, you'll use the values on the bill within the by your.
But you can gift the credits.
Yeah.
So we could, so we could actually gift, in the event that we, to Matt's question, if we did not, in fact, consume the twenty-five percent extra that we generated, assuming what you said did not, in fact, come to pass, we could, in fact, gift that twenty-five percent to a seventy-six percent school.
There are, yes, there are, there are ways to transfer mons and credits.
So in the event that that ever happened, we could certainly pay off someone else.
Exactly, yeah.
And we could move credits, we could roll credits into the next fiscal year, the next.
Yeah, you can, you can roll credits indefinitely, and you can also shift them onto different bills. So it is flexible, but I don't, I think, you know, you will just use them all on the bill if that's what's simplest.
Do you rent to own?
So we do have in the contract the ability for the districts to, to do a buy, to buy the system after. It's not, you can't just buy whenever you want. There, there are certain years, but it's seven, ten, and fifteen, when you can buy out the system at a, at a, at a cost. And that cost is basically calculated so that we're made whole if you decide that you want to buy it out early. So it's not quite rent to own, but if, there's a, a right of purchase.
And did the committee that reviewed solar look at all three options, rent to own, buyout flat, and lease forever for twenty years?
No, I mean, I think we, the, one of the financial calculations we did, what if we were to own our own solar, get into the solar business? That's, that's the evaluation we did. We did not do, you know, buy, you know, buy in five years, ten years, or fifteen years. I think part of the challenge is, you know, we are involved in so many different sectors of work, you know, food services, transportation, that are important to the operation, but aren't necessarily central to our mission of really educating kids. So part of the conversation we had is really, you know, what is, what is a way we can save money, participate in the, the, the green economy, and not also tax some of our internal resources, people resources at the central office level?
That's a great answer.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a great answer, thank you for that.
But I think, but one last question, but I think we, it's something we could look at, we could do some financial modeling around ten years or fifteen years, does it make sense? I think that would be a, a good exercise.
So could North Borough and or the region transfer their credits to South Borough?
Yeah.
You could, I mean, they're all the same.
Becky doesn't want to do that. I'm hoping that Becky in the background will be like, Joe, I don't want that.
This wasn't a poll.
It also doesn't sound like, at the end of the day, there's really no credits to transfer.
Yeah.
Like, there really, like, there really is, there's savings, there's savings and savings only. Like, you know, there is no.
Especially to the point if you have low growth, these percentages are going to.
Yeah, there's no, there is no, yeah.
Only two and a half percent, you said.
I was talking about if you electrify your heating or your heat, the heat costs.
Greg says we're going down.
Geothermal.
Geo.
Kathleen?
Pursuant to that comment, of course, I saw the Boston Globe article about several districts in the Commonwealth going to geothermal, which is a very exciting option as well pedagogically, in addition to the solar. How many boilers in the buildings that we're talking about here are, have a lifespan that's ending, say, five to seven years, that we could actually start prepping? And would that be a cost savings to the building usage? And then how can we wrap that into educational opportunities for the kids?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have, most of our facilities in North Borough have relatively new heating systems, with the exception of Peaslee Elementary. And then in South Borough, we have, you know, relatively new heating systems. We have the potential of one aging out of Trotty or, and then NEARI.
Yeah.
And then at the high school, I think we, we will be seeing a HVAC project at some point in the next, you know, five to ten to twelve years.
Yeah.
Okay. So a little further out than we could hope for?
Yeah.
And certainly with any of the new buildings we're considering, including NEARI, those are things that we're exploring.
Right.
So any of those energy efficiency options, whether it's geothermal, solar, the list goes on, everything's being entertained. With, when we have those opportunities, when we're building a new building, very exciting.
From an educational standpoint, to offer those very green technologies would be exciting as well.
Yeah, and even here with the solar array that's on the roof that selected for us a couple of years ago, we do have that data coming in on a daily basis, and it's been able to be analyzed with, with a variety of interested group students. So, you know, Principal Bevan has worked with teachers on gathering that and getting students that information just for, you know, extra exploration. We have had a couple of students interested in take that on here.
Thank you.
Chris?
Mr. Chris, what happens to the equipment at the end of the lease?
So the standard provision is we have to take it off at our expense at the end of the term. So if you bought it early, then you would have to take it off at your own expense, so that's, that's the one important, you know, distinction. But.
But you haven't even been in existence to take it back yet. You haven't been around for twenty years.
True, you know, we are, we, I.
Because a lot of times, you just leave it there because it's, there's no value.
No, we have to take it off. So if we're, you know, and just in terms of longevity, we're one of the older solar companies in Massachusetts. We're also a wholly owned subsidiary of Paterson Energy Group, which is, you know, the largest developers of utility-scale projects in the country. So it's a little lot of financial backbone, I guess, and you plan to be here, you know, twenty years for sure to take it off.
Yaslin?
If they have to be removed, or at the time that they were removed, how recyclable are the materials, or are we just talking landfill?
So I think, you know, right now, today, the recycling industry isn't fully developed for, for solar panels or is recycling. But I think in twenty, twenty-five years, this is going to be such a commonplace, you know, technology on so many buildings that there will be more of an industry for it. So I would say, I can't guarantee anything in twenty, twenty-five years from now, but there's going to be a lot more of a robust sector in recycling.
So what is the ecological cost on the front end?
In terms of the manufacturing process? I don't, I don't have those figures, but I can, I can assure you this, the generation of electricity over twenty, twenty-five years will, it'll dwarf any, any consumption of electricity to make the panels.
Well, look at the lithium for car batteries and the devastation to that, and, you know, you're, you're creating one problem to try to solve another. Just sensitive to it.
Well, it's important to remember the, the grid, you know, right now is, you know, not quite fifty percent renewable or dependent where you are. So it's mostly natural gas. If it's not renewable, so, you know, hydro and then you could, solar and wind. So I think if we're going to get a green grid, we have to, you know, build projects, especially ones by the meter where they're serving outside load.
I just don't want to be blinded to the sourcing, so thanks.
Question?
A question?
What is the increased risk from a fire perspective in terms of how fire departments are able to reduce damage to a building if they were?
Sure, we don't think there's any increased risk. We, you know, all of the permitting has to go through, you know, the local permitting office. So there, there are codes in place with the fire department that, you know, they feel like they have adequate access. There's also access for, you know, folks working on the roof if they have to service something on the roof, like a, like a, you know, heat pump or a vent. So in terms of being, when you're on the roof, you can move around to the places you need to be.
Is there a turn-off switch?
Is there what?
Turn-off switch?
Yes.
So.
The utility mandates there's a disconnect, and the, it can just, fire department can pull it and it all things off when they come on.
What does the contract say about the maintenance repair for, for damages or natural wear? Fire damage, whatever.
Yeah. So, so in terms of, you know, we do proactive and, and responsive operations, I mean, and so as an owner of the asset, that's what, you know, we're responsible for making sure that it performs, and it's in our financial interest to make sure it performs. And in terms of if there were to be like a natural disaster, like a tree, you know, were to fall, and I don't think that's an issue with most of these buildings, but something of that nature, a hurricane caused damage, that, that would be, you know, we're insuring the equipment. So we would have a loss claim with, you know, our, our insurer on it. Those are the big categories, and in terms of if a panel stops working or a furniture stops working, we handle all that. We, we might file a warranty claim to get a new one, but it's not something the district needs to do.
Back to the end-of-life question on the canopies, does that apply to something, you're responsible for getting rid of all that infrastructure?
Yes, yeah. So, you know, in the canopy situation, I think the, the stock contract would say we, we're a little, I think, in reality, you know, in twenty-five years, maybe we put new panels on for the same canopy structure, but still, you know, it's a structural entirety should, should be just fine as, you know, structural, so. But it is our responsibility to get it out of there.
I'm surprised you didn't mention in this, this sort of auxiliary benefit. I'm surprised you didn't mention in this, this sort of auxiliary benefit that it helps lighten the roof. I thought that's what I heard, so isn't that, I'm surprised you didn't mention that, because if you put a new roof on, put panels over it, it probably helps longevity of the roof.
Yeah, I was, that is fair. It may depend a little bit on the, the style, so on a roof, a flat roof, because you're going to have the panels to open up. So not every square inch of the roof is going to be sort of blocked, uh, from, from getting UV rays. So I would say it might be, um, it's going to contribute to blocking UV rays, so for sure. So, um, on a slope, it would make a little more pronounced.
Joan, I just, in the, in the interest of time, um, is, are there any more questions that we want to take or want to move forward in the presentation?
I guess move on to the present, the end of the presentation.
Sure. So I think, uh, yeah, that was the Algonquin site, and then we've had a couple, um, similar canopies. This would be sort of what, you know, in school we have. It's called a Y shape. It kind of has a low point in the center of it with the kind of, you know, two arrays facing each other. And then this is more the long span, um, style like the Algonquin would have, where you have, you know, quite a, quite a longer distance between the piers. So you can drive, kind of in dry aisles underneath the canopy. Um, just wanted to give, give those of a, as an idea what it would look like. And that's it.
That is.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank the members for the questions and great responses. And Greg, what's the next steps now?
Sure. So, um, the next steps are to meet with each of the school committees and actually present the language pre-K through eight, Southborough and Northborough committees, that we would need to move forward with, um, the select boards, um, to get this as a warrant article. Um, so I plan on drafting a memo to, um, Mark Purple and interim director Mike Gallagher, um, so that we can get this in front of the select board as well. At the regional level, again, a presentation on, um, you know, the next steps in terms of licensing agreement. Um, it's a different process at the regional, um, level. The regional, uh, district and the committee has a lot more autonomy. It does not require us to go forward, um, before town meetings and ask for approval. Therefore, I think, um, you know, if I were to predict, probably the, the first projects that we would see would be at Algonquin because of not needing to go before town meetings. So more information to the committees, um, sharing the process with the committees, and then moving forward, working in partnership with the two towns on, um, the lease agreements for the roofs.
Could these potentially be due this summer?
I think a couple, a couple of factors. We're, we're waiting for, um, some more information on, um, the roofing, uh, the money to, the sustainability for infrastructure to actually create spaces that can hold solar.
I'm thinking like Procter, for example, they have a brand new roof, like they, you know, like, could that be something that?
We have interconnection agreements on all projects, but the ones that, here.
Well, Algonquin's still working on, um, the.
So potentially.
Okay. Uh, last question?
Well, it's, it's more a request. So as it moves forward, um, my immediate reaction is this is the type of stuff we should be looking at. The way it was presented, it presents like it's a financial savings. It feels like it wasn't all that much given a twenty, twenty-five year, but that being said, there's another element to it because it's a conservative view on savings, because we don't know how much energy prices will change. So what I'd like to understand when we go to make decisions from a financial perspective, how much of our energy costs are we actually fixing? Because there's an element, if you can say that we are now fixing seventy percent, eighty percent of our energy costs for the next twenty-five years, aside how much savings you get, maybe you just, you now know one number in your budget is basically fixed. Or because of all the demand charges and other things that are added costs, maybe you're only fixing thirty percent. I just, I'd like to understand that, because I think when people see physical assets like that on your building, the assumption is we're getting our energy for free.
And I think we can do, you know, the proof of concept at Algonquin. This was to, you know, having the current array was really to make sure it was financially feasible. And I think we also can do some financial modeling on, on what was projected and what we actually, you know, saved, um, and present that back to the committee.
And I would say, since this is going to come back to the individual committees, if any other members have any other questions, contact your chair, and then the chair will forward those to the superintendent. So if you come up with something else that you'd like more information on, okay? Thank you. Going on to the agenda, the next item we have is the draft of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, uh, oh, distribution of the revised school committee meeting dates. And there's no vote. We did take a vote back on March the eighth, and this is just, uh, the location for the combined meetings had just changed. So that's just for your, just a distribution, no vote or discussion. Next item that we have is the draft of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five student calendar. Mr. Martino will be making a, a small presentation, and also there will be a vote tonight by Northborough, Southborough, and the region.
So the calendar that was provided you in the packet, um, has not changed since the calendar was presented, uh, at the September combined meeting. Um, the, the recommended twenty-four, twenty-five student calendar parallels, the twenty-three, twenty-fourth, uh, calendar, as agreed with a motion that was made, uh, and approved in the March, March eighth, twenty twenty-three combined meeting. That, and I'll read the motion, to agree that, uh, it is the intention of the committees to continue work on the calendar and policies along the same lines as what was occurred in the last few months, and that the intention is to continue next year's calendar set up for at least one more year after that. Um, so part of the work really that we've been doing behind the scenes is implementing wellness days, collecting feedback around those wellness days to see if they've had an intended, uh, impact. We've collected a lot of data around, uh, the impact and, and thinking around how we can improve wellness days, um, as we look at next year's calendar. And I will be convening a calendar study group to continue that work, looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. Uh, in terms of the wellness day feedback, um, I did not include identification of the wellness, wellness days on the calendar. For a couple of reasons. Uh, a lot of the feedback spoke to the fact that the distribution of the current wellness days in the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar were front-loaded. There were a lot in the month, months of, um, September, October, and November. And it really presented, uh, an impact, an unintended impact at the high school level, uh, in terms of pacing of curriculum. Um, I think that, so really thinking, the feedback that we received from both students and teachers, um, was that, you know, distribute the wellness days equally throughout the calendar. And also the calendar study group really focused, tried to focus on having the wellness days align with religious observances. So that was the reason why we identified the, uh, wellness days for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, school year. But next year it might not be the best, um, option for us to consider. The other feedback around wellness days was just the fact that, uh, for many of our middle school and high school students, what happened was that it wasn't less work, it was more work, um, that piled up, that accumulated as a result of the wellness days. So there's really more work to do with teachers, um, and students on getting feedback around. The intention was never to just move the work out and give kids a break and, and then have a ton of work at the end of the week. Uh, but was ra- rather truly to give students, um, a break from work and not, um, again, move the work forward in, in the days after wellness days. Um, I think the feedback overall, um, was, was fairly positive. I think people understood the intention. I think it was good, a good first year. And we have one more wellness day. We learned a lot. Um, and my intention is to have four wellness days built into the calendar next year. Uh, but I want to have more thought, uh, with teachers, with students, and the community around where those would best be, uh, fit, uh, to achieve the goals. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the calendar and wellness days.
Thank you. Um, so I, I read the detail. One thing that I, I just heard you mention, um, and I, but I, I noticed from a few of the comments, what I sort of interpreted, but I, I think only maybe touched on it, I felt like the students were commenting that the teachers didn't necessarily all understand what the wellness day was all about and how to utilize it. So I think it wasn't in your summary either. That's why I guess, I, I'd just like to make, uh, ask that question. I felt like the students were kind of commenting.
Yeah, the students, uh, some of the feedback from the students was that, um, they were clear on the intention of the wellness days and, and what they experienced from teachers wasn't all, you know, in many, many instances, wasn't following the intention of the wellness day.
Right.
And that's, you know, and I.
It might require some education to the teachers.
Education, I think, again, at the high school level, um, really condensing the wellness days, you know, unintentionally, one of the consequences was feeling, you know, like we condensed the number of days that they could afford with curriculum.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so, um.
I just have one question. Do we have a homework policy?
We do.
I might want to take another look at that. Cause I mean, you know, as we've been sitting here talking about too, and our school rep at the, at the high schools constantly talking about stress, I mean, I don't know, I just want to look at it and see like, how much is necessary and what is, you know, so I'm going to review that.
I second that emotion.
Okay. Good motion for, I mean, good thoughts for the members that are on the policy committee to take a look at that. Okay. So at this time, we will take the vote, starting with Northborough, Southborough. And, uh, when we get to the region, Matt, you'll have, you will, as vice chair, will take that vote because Kathleen had to leave due to another commitment, okay?
Okay.
All right. Kelly, for Northborough?
Well, sorry, what are we voting?
We're, um, there is.
For the two thousand twenty-four.
I will, I can.
Twenty twenty-five, go ahead.
So I'll take a motion to agree that it's the intention of the committees to continue to work on the calendar and the policies along the same lines as what was occurred in the last few months, and that the intention is to continue the next year's calendar setup for at least one more year after that.
And then we also have to accept.
So that's.
And accept.
Accepting this draft with the intention that the.
I think the motion, the motion really before the, or the decision before the committees is, do you, do you want to vote of the presented calendar as a twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar? I think, Kelly, what you wrote was the motion that we had at the last combined meeting in, in the, in the spring. So really before you is, does the committee want to vote the calendar at this combined meeting, or are we waiting till March? And if so, someone can make a motion to approve the, um, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, school calendar as presented.
I'll make a motion for Northborough to approve the twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five student calendar as presented this evening.
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Opposed? Um, so three in favor embrace opposes. Southborough?
I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five calendar as accepted.
Motion by Roger, seconded by Z. All in favor? That's unanimous.
Region, Matt?
I'll accept the motion. I make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar as presented this evening.
Second.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Joan. Uh, any comments?
Can I ask a question? I think I've asked this before, but I don't remember. Um, the answer, so none of the professional days that happen at each district are represented on the calendar, correct?
They all are. They're the green ones. They're happening, they're front-loading them. They want three of them in August.
But there's one on the fifth.
And then one on November fifth.
In November, okay. So, and that's it? That, okay.
And, and, and we did a lot of front-loading in twenty twenty, if you remember. It was longer, but they liked the combined time prior to cool sto- school starting.
Yes.
And then the extra day, they use as floating hours. They.
Flex, flex.
Flexible PBs.
Because at one time they were.
Yeah.
Going back a while. There were a lot. That, I don't think were represented. Okay. I like, better.
If there's no additional commentary, I have a motion by Chris and a second by Joan. Um, all in favor? Yeah, it's unanimous. Um, sorry, can I, can I see it right now?
Okay, thank you. Um, next we have is policy development and or distribution.
So we have first readings, uh, school immunization requirements, J one hundred and J one twenty-four, Southborough and the region. First reading for child abuse and neglect for all three committees, and also substance use prevention and education policy. So, um, these are the policies that the joint policy subcommittee has been working on. They have gone to legal counsel. And Mary Ellen Duggan has been instrumental in reviewing these. So I'm happy to hear any feedback, any questions about these policies. Any feedback and questions would go back to the policy subcommittee before we bring these for a second read at the March combined meeting.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question on this. Um, for the, for the school immunization requirements on policy. Mary Ellen. Okay.
Do you not have confidence? I can't.
Oh, or Greg, or Greg.
Because you're probably right.
There's, there's some nuance, I think, that is, um, written into here, but, um, for situations where the, I don't know, where, where, um, the student coming into the school district is, um, uh, an international student, or it's new due to emergency orders. We've had all sorts of situations happen. How do we, um, address those caveats? I know, and is it just by, like, the sentence that says, you know, based on Massachusetts Department, protocol? But suppose there isn't one in place because of those. And again, I just bring it up because we've had these.
It's nuanced.
Yes.
Mary Ellen, do you want to?
Our students that come in, um, like, for example, our newcomers who have just arrived. There are a lot of them covered under the McKinney Vento Act, so that covers their immunizations. And so we just work with them to get them immunized. Uh, so they really don't, this policy would not apply to them. So there are different, um, acts or regulations. Massachusetts regulations or Massachusetts law that would cover those nuances.
So Mary Ellen, the two, the two areas were really our religious exemptions, and the second is, um, a, a student or family identified as homeless. We cannot prohibit or, or prevent the student from starting school, uh, because they don't have their, um, immunizations. But they still need to get their immunizations. We just can't prevent them from starting. So those are the real two exemptions that, that.
But medical exemptions.
It's a medical.
Medical.
Medical limits exemptions, the McKinney Vento. Um, covered to, to newcomers too. We would work with them, or homeless, the homeless.
And since this is just like first reading, so the second sentence, um, that says like the only exceptions to this requirement will be made on, I just, um, would ask that maybe relook at noting that that's the only exception, because it sounds like it's not. Cause we, because of the two reasons that you just stated.
Three.
Or, yeah.
But the exceptions are medical exemptions and limits exemption. Those are the two exceptions.
Okay, not, what about the homelessness and the, um, McKinney? Okay.
So their immunization records might be delayed. For some reason, they might have all their immunizations, but they might delay. The law, we have to let them in, even if they don't.
Well, I think you, you hear the spirit of what I'm.
Yeah, I think, um, too, and, and through the chair. So the joint policy subcommittee will be meeting to continue its work. If you have any feedback on any of the po- the first readings, email your, your chair, and then we'll bring that and discuss that at the next policy meeting. Um, all great, all great questions and comments.
The next item, number seven on our agenda, is personnel update.
So in your packet is the personnel update. Unfortunately, there are two, um, people listed on this, uh, personnel report. So Julie Doyle, um, Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning will be retiring effective March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Although I'm still trying to convince her to think about a June date. Um, I still think there's. Although I'm still trying to convince her to think about a June date. I still think there's hope. She probably disagrees. And then wrote a ad, Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity, will be retiring, as you know, at the end of this school year on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And we will have time to acknowledge their dedication and commitment to the districts.
Yeah, two wonderful seasoned educators that have been with us for a long time and have done a positive impact for the students and even into the community. So as Greg said, there'll be many times we'll be able to give our thanks and gratitude for their devotion to the kids. Uh, next item is action on the minutes. We need a vote from North Row, South Row, Region and Union on combined open meeting minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. North Row.
Sorry, before we vote.
Yes.
Can we have discussion?
Uh, can we have discussion?
What?
Can we have discussion before we vote?
On the minutes?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So on the motion for revising the school committee dates for twenty-three, twenty-four, I think that it should read, so the, the original proposal from administration was to change the joint meeting from Thursday, June twentieth to Monday, June seventeen. And then somebody, I, I don't know who, but the committee has decided to vote the motion to, to go back to the twentieth. And that's not what this motion reads. So I think the motion just needs to say with one change, meeting moved from Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four to Thursday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, for all of the motions for each committee.
Okay. So you'd like to make that as an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So North Row, could we have, Kelly, can South Row make that motion first? Cause then you can follow with the same emotion, motion. Can we change?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. I'm just, I'm looking at, so you're.
What page?
So you're saying.
Page four.
The revised school committee meeting dates.
Yep.
Committee meeting from Thursday, June twentieth to Monday, June seventeen.
It should be reversed because the original proposal was to make it June seventeenth. But the committees did not want to follow that because I think you didn't want to have back to back meetings on the seventeenth. So you flipped it. And so the change, the change was really to change, to make it this Thursday, not Monday.
How about Chelsea makes a motion and everybody?
Yeah, I was just clarifying the dates and I'm just looking up the calendar.
It does, it doesn't talk about.
This isn't even what we voted.
No, because it doesn't talk about the hybrid.
The whole point of the vote, because this is the one I have is opposed.
Yeah.
I was opposed to the fact that we were changing it to remote meetings.
Right.
I, so my recommendation to the chair.
Okay.
Is, you know, we don't need to vote these this evening. I would say let's send them back to central office, review the, the video and make sure we have it accurate. And then make sure we have clarity and then bring it back to the March meeting.
Yeah, because if it was. Oh, was the.
It's really around.
This was the last.
The other.
The last.
We had technical difficulty at that meeting.
Well, the other, I'll, I'll just also comment that this is not something the school committee really needs to vote on. School committee dates. I mean, it's been past practice, but it is not something that is essential that it's voted on in future iterations, like for example, next year. I think because we have, we should continue with this and let's look at the meeting minutes, get clarification. I can connect with Chelsea and Matt and make sure we have it accurate.
Yeah, if Chelsea and Matt go through the chairs or, or, you know, to Cheryl Lepry, okay? I'll make those corrections, send her an email. And we'll hold these off until our March meeting. Okay, next is, we have another, any other comments on the minutes before I go on? Okay. Uh, next on our agenda, number nine is public comment. We have some audience members. We have the Chair of North Row, Mitch Cohen, in person. So thank you very much for attending. No comment. And so at this time, Kelly?
Um, so future agenda items, I know we don't talk about just, uh, the North Row cable TV. I know they're doing work in here for sound and things like that. I know they've got ideas about meeting locations, technical things, stuff like that. So my suggestion would be potentially having them come in, in, at a March meeting and do some sort of presentation, letting us know like their capabilities. Us, I know we've had back and forth about remote meetings and hybrid meetings and like all that kind of stuff. So I thought it would be a good idea to have them. If nobody else wants it, then we can just have them at a North Row meeting. But I thought since they're kind of doing well, I do that idea.
Okay. Make a notation of that for, for March. Any other future agenda items? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I'd like to have North Row, South Row, Region and Union go for adjourned.
North Row's, yeah.
North Row would just be into staying. You wouldn't have to do one, I'm sorry. Okay, for South Row. Molly?
I don't know. I'm taking a motion to adjourn the meeting as of six fifty PM for South Row. So move by Roger, second by, um, and all in favor? Unanimous?
Mark for the region?
Accept the motion to adjourn the Algonquin Regional School Committee meeting, six fifty PM on December sixth. By Kathy.
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor? Passes.
And I entertain a motion from the Union to adjourn the supervising number three at six fifteen PM. So moved by Bryce, second by Kelly. All those in favor? And for adjourned. Thank you.
Let's take about those five minutes.